Seven o'clock. Eighteen, and I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, up next, we have roll call.
Counselor Hensley? All counselors present and a quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Behill, your.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. The agenda, uh, I'm sorry, citizen comments. Let me scroll down. Citizen comments, uh, this is the segment of the agenda to where we ask anyone who would like to make any comments, um, that have turned in comment cards, you would go over to the mic, make your comments. We do ask that you, uh, keep your comments within a three-minute timeframe. And also, we want to make sure that we, we continue to practice civility, being mindful and thoughtful of the words that are said, and also just considering, um, the, the, the people who are in attendance. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any cards.
I do not have any cards either, Mayor.
Okay, so let's go ahead and open it up on Zoom. If you could share with them on Zoom, uh, how to raise their hand to be recognized.
Yes, sir. If you're on Zoom and you want to speak for your public comment, you'll use this raise hand button in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the citizen comments, and we'll move on down the agenda to ceremonial items. We're gonna have a proclamation tonight celebrating fifty years of the summer reading, uh, at the Alamosa Public Library. We share here on council, uh, reading proclamations. Um, and tonight, we're gonna have the honor of the proclamation being read by Counselor Krebs, uh, who's also on the library board.
Thank you, Mayor.
And if we have any board members who would like to come up to the podium and may say some words, feel free to. And then afterwards, we will come down and, um, take a group picture with everyone.
This is the proclamation for the fiftieth anniversary of the Alamosa Public Library Summer Reading Program. Whereas, public libraries have been promoting summer reading programs for over a hundred years, and the Alamosa Public Library has been celebrating summer reading since nineteen seventy-five. And whereas, summer reading programs help stop summer learning loss and keep children's and families reading, learning, and engaged when school is out of session. And whereas, researchers have found that the best predictor of whether or not a child loses their academic progress over the summer is if that child reads. And whereas, reading has been shown to have many health benefits for adults, such as reduced stress and improved memory. And whereas, public libraries and the Alamosa Public Library also provide free events during the summer to inform, educate, and culturally enrich the people of the community. And whereas, the Alamosa Public Library will be hosting two months of free events for all ages, both inside and outside the library, to celebrate reading and learning. Therefore, be it resolved that Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire Alamosa City Council, proclaim the week of June twenty-third as Summer Reading Week in honor of the fiftieth anniversary of the Summer Reading Program in Alamosa. We encourage all residents to connect with the Alamosa Public Library, participate in summer reading, and support the library year-round.
If anyone want to say anything, you're more than welcome to at this time, and we'll come down and present the.
Mayor, I'd like to say it's a privilege to serve as a board member, especially under Maria. She's amazing. So, thank you.
I'd also like to thank the city, uh, for providing support for fifty years, obviously, and more, for the public library, and that we've got one of the best public library systems around here. So, thank you very much.
I would like to salute the city for all what they do and encourage everybody, both city council, staff, and audience members, to get a good book.
Think they said it all? Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're coming down. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Counselor Krebs. All right, up next, we have consent calendar A. Counselor Yan Vehill.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, on the regular business, we have a presentation from an outside agency, uh, an update for, for the Little Learners Mayor's Challenge.
Good evening, counsel, and all my fellow compadres that I see every day. Thanks for having us here today. We're going to turn it over to Erin to give you the real important, uh, information, and then we'll chime in. Is that okay?
Uh, thanks for the opportunity to give you guys an update. Uh, first, I want to recognize and appreciate the city for your investment of the fifty thousand dollars that you've put up for a mayor's challenge. To date, counting matching funds, we've raised just under thirty-five thousand dollars for the construction of the Early Child Learning Center, um, what we're calling the Little Learners Academy on the campus of the Boys and Girls Clubs. So that's about seventeen thousand dollars of match that has gone out so far. There's more opportunity, and I think we have a really good plan to fill in some of those gaps. Um, but I think I want to turn it over to my co-chairs, Kathy and Mike, to talk a little bit about the importance of this project.
You know, we know how desperately the San Luis Valley needs more childcare. By building this, uh, beautiful building and, and staffing it with knowledgeable staff that are able to help get our little learners a good start on their lives, there's still a need, even after we build this building. So we just, we aren't getting enough. It's not gonna affect the other childcare centers here. There's plenty to go around and more need than, than, uh, we can provide. So, we're excited about this project. Again, we do thank you guys for allowing us to, you know, the mayor's challenge, that's pretty amazing, and that's a big, a big thing in your, so we're all encouraging ours, our community, the whole San Luis Valley, to help, uh, help us make this happen. It, it will benefit all of us. So, that's why we're here tonight.
Michael?
Thank you. So, I've only been in the valley about thirty years, but the one of the constants in that thirty years is this conversation. And we're down to the last twenty-five percent of the entire project, uh, before we cap this thing and say it's done, paid for in cash. And so, it's, it's become a bit of an amazing thing. And Erin's got a whole different presentation on it's our turn. It's really the kids' turn. And I got so fascinated not so many years ago when that young man did the, uh, project called Pay It Forward. And I think he should receive still some significant recognition for what he did. He made a huge difference. But there's a simpler piece, and I would guess every one of you heard it long before you were two or three years old. And it's called Put It Back. Put it back where you got it, hon, don. Yes. Whatever it was, whatever you thought, education, your early benefits from education in your community, it's our turn to put this piece in place and to raise the level of, uh, services that are available here and, uh, make it more of an aspiration to, to see this happen many times in the valley. Anyway, like everybody else on the team and or at half members like Ronnie, uh, just want to thank you for your participation and, and, uh, everybody standing at the table to see this thing completed. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll open it up to see if any council members want to make any comments. Okay? Well, I want to thank you all for... Oh, Erin, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Erin.
That's all right. I just, uh, want to share a few things. So, uh, my co-chairs have shared that we've done this project all backwards. We came in with lots of money from foundations, from grants, from state partners, from federal partners, to build a building in our own backyard. The folks across this state believe in this project. Foundations from the Front Range believe in this project. They've stepped up, they've pointed up. The city believes in this project. The county believes in this project. Uh, we've had a lot of investment, but we need local investment. Um, and, and so, when we say it's our turn, this is, this is our future. These are our kids. This is our backyard. We can't wait for somebody else to come and sign a check for the future of our kids. It's our turn to take on that responsibility. It's our turn to fill in that gap. We have twenty-five percent of this project left to go. The Boys and Girls Club Board has stepped up and taken out a mortgage to make sure that this project goes forward. The STEM walls are poured, the foundations and piers are poured. The construction is happening, the building is going up. It's our turn to fill in the blanks. And those blanks aren't too big if we all get together and figure out a way to move forward. The stone soup way has always been the way of the San Luis Valley. We all put a little bit in the pot and it becomes some tasty delicious dish at the end of the day. We're not a place where we stand back and watch somebody else cook us a meal. It's our turn to cook the meal for our kids and our future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so very much for that message. And, um, I'll open it up for some of our council members. We have Counselor Carson.
Thank you guys for what you're doing, and that was excellent. That was well put, Erin, uh. And you hit it on the head. This is a project that's been needed, and as much of a gap that there still is, this will be huge. I know a lot of people that are looking forward to it, a lot of people that are excited about it, seeing the construction. Uh, you guys are just kicking butt. So, thank you again very much. Keep, keep going.
Okay, Counselor Dominguez.
Um, I just want to thank you guys for, this is phenomenal. Like, the, the amount you raised in the beginning was huge. And considering what we're going through now as a nation and funds are even tighter, I know it's gonna take more than just the regular suspects to get this done. So, um, we'll do on our end what we can to push that stone soup forward, and thank you guys once again for working so hard.
And I'll wrap things up. I just want to commend you on where, where you are right now. I have all the confidence in the world that we will reach that number that we need to reach and fill that twenty-five percent gap because we have great leaders like you all out there in the community, uh, doing all you can to make the dream of that Little Learners, uh, uh, Academy to a reality. So, let's keep it up and let's keep it going, and we'll get there. Stone soup it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Erin.
Thanks, Counsel.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Finance, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number fifteen, twenty-twenty-five, and ordinance amending section eighteen dash forty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to remove the provision allowing vendors to retain two percent sales tax with a cap of one hundred dollars to offset cost of collecting such tax. Ms. Leanne?
Good evening, counsel, Mayor. So, when section eighteen dash four-seven was created, a long time ago, apparently, it allowed vendors to retain two percent, up to a hundred dollars, to offset their cost of collecting and filing and doing paperwork for sales tax. Last May, the legislature passed House Bill twenty-four dash zero-two-five that removes our ability to cap that at a hundred dollars. So, essentially, um, that would allow vendors, and, and when we're talking about big vendors here in the valley, if they were allowed to retain two percent without a cap, that could be significant to us. So, in order to stay compliant with what the state has done, staff is recommending that we just remove that provision altogether so that vendors can't retain anything. And we don't believe that there are any vendors that are taking advantage of that anyway. So, it's not really taking anything away from anybody.
Okay, so what we'll do at this time, we'll open up the public hearing for ordinance number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-five and ordinance amending section eighteen dash forty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to remove the provisions allowing vendors to retain two percent sales tax with a cap of hundred dollars to offsets, to offset the cost of collecting such tax. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium and, uh, make any comments, now would be the time to do so. I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium. So now, we're opening up for Zoom participants. If you would like to participate in this hearing, now would be the time to use your raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen so that we can recognize you and give you an opportunity to speak at this public hearing. Ms. Martinez? I don't see any hands. Do you?
I do not see any either, Mayor.
Okay, so with that being said, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council. Counselor Carson?
Mayor, I'll move that we, uh, adopt ordinance, uh, number fifteen dash twenty-twenty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leanne. Okay, that brings us to the next item. Public hearing and second reading for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-twenty-five and ordinance amending sections three dash one and three dash seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to add a definition of pet and to clarify the responsibility of owners with respect to pet waste.
Mayor? Counsel, good evening. Um, so, uh, this is really called pooper-scooper law. Um, it just requires you to, um, just as some clarification, our ordinance was pretty, was pretty weak. So, we just did some, uh, clarification direction on how to responsibly dispose of pet waste. Like, if you're walking your dog and it, they do their business on somebody else's lawn or something like that, this just clarifies and codifies it that we, um, can enforce that. And that it also, um, prevents people from allowing it to accumulate on their own property. So, it's just kind of a cleanup, really, on this whole thing.
Literally, yeah, literally cleanup. Okay, Counsel Yan Vehill?
Real quick, uh, Chief, you mentioned there at the end, even, uh, people who have pets who don't clean up on their own yard, if it affects neighbors with odor and that.
Correct.
Okay.
That, that is correct. Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, I'll use my dogs, for example, right? They go in the backyard and stuff, and at least once a week or so, I try to go out and clean up after them. So, this just prevents them from, like, letting it pile up and, and, great way to explain it.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief, Chief, just for public information, how, how would it work? Let's say someone sees somebody with their dog doing their business in their yard. Who do they call?
Uh, code enforcement.
Code enforcement. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And?
And we would, uh, you know, if you can identify, I mean, it happens, it happens almost daily. On, there's all kinds of people walk by and their dogs do their business on my lawn, but I clean it up once a week, so. But yes, it does get kind of irritating.
So, I respect people should when they walk their dog, carry it back.
Pick up after them.
Pick up their, pick up after their dog. Yep, I agree. Hey, any other comments, anybody? Okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing, uh, for ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-twenty-five and ordinance amending section three dash one and three dash seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to add definition of pet and to clarify the responsibility of owners with respect to pet waste. Have anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make any comments? Now would be the time to do so. No? Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead to Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand, be recognized, and we'll, uh, recognize you to speak at this public hearing. Ms. Martinez, I don't see any hands.
Neither, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any comments or motion.
Uh, Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance fourteen dash twenty-twenty-five.
Second motion, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to, um, the next item is committee reports. Okay? Which one do you go first? Okay, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there was a meeting with the Alamosa Housing Authority, um, today, and they discussed, um, some, some nice summary things that they're doing. The fencing project and the security lighting project is continuing and almost complete. They also discussed, um, briefly the federal budget and how it might affect housing authorities in the future, both the pros and the cons. So, they're, um, trying to keep their awareness up around it, um, and see where it lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Jamie Dominguez?
Um, Homeless Coalition met last night, and it was a, it was an awesome meeting, um, a lot of updates. Um, I'll start with the St. Ben update from the Police Department. Um, they talked about partnering with the county, um, in some ways to revisit, um, extensions on people that have been trespassed, and it's working out pretty good. They said they were able to extend five individuals in additional six months, but there are some stipulations behind that. They have to do their part to get back into St. Ben's. Um, they have six more, um, four to five more coming up that they're gonna be looking at to extend. Their partnership to, to get back into St. Ben's is to prove that they're receiving resources and services, and there was conversations around talking how we could do that without, um, violating any HIPAA laws or rules, and they did an awesome job, um, how to get through that. So, that was interesting. Um, it seems like everybody is on board to do their part to make this work. And then, our teen representative, Lily, she brought up some, um, awesome ideas around, um, food insecurities and how to address that in community with, um, alongside the library around, you know how they have them little boxes where you could give a book and take a book? They're thinking about doing this with food. And like, in certain hours of, like, all out, a twenty-four-hour theme, um, there's definitely some logistics behind it, um, around, um, what this unit would look like, what locks would look like, who else would be able to help to tend to these on a day-to-day basis? So, animals, squirrels, deer, and things like that can get to this. But it wa, it was an awesome pitch to the Homeless Coalition, and everybody was on board with helping her and at least looking at and see what this would look like, uh, moving forward, which perishables, it would probably be really good, but, um, vegetables, meat, stuff like that, I think they're staying away from. But it's, it was an awesome idea, and there was people who volunteered to, to talk to people to help build the cabinet, um, and certain areas where there isn't food that's accessible, so there wouldn't be one right next to the food bank. There would be one in another part of the neighborhood. So, they, they really were strategically, um, visiting this project, and they pitched it to the Homeless Coalition. I thought it was an awesome idea coming from our, our youth teen who was really ambitious about it. So, that was good. The library, they also had a pitch for doing kind of like a storyboard or a project or a wall inside the library with images of homelessness to help get education out around addressing the stigma of homelessness. Maybe some stories with some people and images and talking about, um, how they end up in these scenarios and it running like a six-month theme, um, in the library so people can actually see it and, and get context around, um, certain people's, um, real story around it as opposed to just it being, uh, stigmatized, um, population, which was also interesting. They also talked about a traveling board that could go to events during the summer that they would actually print all the content in a smaller form to be able to put this board and resource events and, and do that at the same time. So, it, it went a step further, and I, um, everybody was on board for that, and there's some conversations around events coming up where they can, can, um, do that pop-up board. So, that was also pretty cool. Horizon Heights with the housing updates, um, this was, I was pretty blown away about the numbers and I, and don't quote me on these, I did my best to take notes, but there, they had already housed twenty-nine individuals, and ten of them have moved on to better, better, um, scenarios. Um, one actually became a homeowner. They've become a, a tight-knit community, like, they'll sit out there in the evening and talk about things, and I think they've pretty much settled in and, and, um, they become like their own little community, and I thought that was awesome. But the success rate that Don shared was that it's about a ninety-three percent success rate. They have had, had to evict a few people, but, um, nothing major, just certain things. And the success rate was huge, I think, because I remember when this project first got kicked off, it was, you know, there's always some pushback. So, this was a good thing. I mean, one, becoming a homeowner, that was awesome. They're planning on a celebration. There's no details yet, but they're working on, on planning a celebration for the, for this, um, community, and it was awesome. There was also some landlord, um, tenant education going on with each, with them, too. Like, what happens if you don't pay your rent, what, this and these things. So, they're not just evicting people, they're actually explaining why eviction is and the laws. So, it, it was interesting that they were also working with them on some education, and they do have a waiting list. So, this was good, too. So, Mobile Home Park, they're working on cleanup of some of the homes. They've been doing asbestos testing. Um, they're doing as many as they can without, um, burdening the, 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 or the contractor who does that. So, Don explained that there will be at least twelve homes moved this summer, which is a pretty good, um, chunk. Some are coming back with, with asbestos in large amounts, small amounts, so they're working through all that. They're, they're doing a good job on evicting nuisances and illegal activities. They've seen a lot lower traffic rate through the park now that they've been able to, to evict certain, um, individuals and, and address certain criminal activities there. And it's noticeable, she said, especially with the traffic in and out of the park. And then, there's the Boyd Building. They're moving forward with that, um, pretty steady. They're putting out an RFP for like his, historic cons, cons, consultations to see if they can get on a historic registry to help, um, facilitate some of the renovations. Um, they're also working to help rebuild the Boyd Parks. This was interesting. I guess I didn't know about this, but they're gonna upgrade Boyd Park, and there's actually gonna be new equipment. There's even a sensory section for autistic kids, what I thought was, was awesome for them to add to that. CRHDC, there was some information that they were able to receive their tax credits, were, which, a pretty substantial amount. The number that was quoted was somewhere in the six million dollar range, so this will help move, this project move forward. I believe they're in phase one and phase two. And in this project, the Housing Authority, Don touched on some, I mean, some of this stuff, um. And La Puente had, uh, wanted me, wanted us to talk about the backpack drive. This is awesome. They, they moved their backpack drive to like the outer parts of the valley. Um, the school district has, has done a good job with registering kids and, and doing a backpack drive in Alamosa, but their efforts have been pushed to the smaller communities, which I think is a nice something for them to do, too. And that's, that's it for the Homeless Coalition. Oh, and we did, um, acknowledge our new members, the veteran, um, Eli, and a few other members for, I can't quote exactly what position they were filling. Some people showed up who thought they were appointed. The position was still open, but they're gonna go through the process now to, to get, um, on the board. So, that we have people actually showing up and wanting to be a part of it to fill some of them empty positions. So, it was a good meeting.
Thank you so very much for that, for that update. Do we have any other, uh, updates on any other boards? I'll give a brief update on the Parks and Rec, um, board. We met this past week. And, um, Andy talked a lot about, um, the, uh, park equipments that they're working on, trying to make sure that some of the parks get, uh, new equipment out there. And, um, we also talked a lot about not just weeds, um, and the challenges that it, uh, it poses. And also, we talked about, um, I think there's a new hire to, and am I right, on, on board? I forget her name right now, but I'm quite sure you could.
It'll be her two weeks.
Okay, in a couple of weeks. But, um, seems like things are going real well, uh, with all the activities that's going on around the community and the people who are participating. They had a real successful, um, weekend a couple of weekends ago as well. So, things are looking very promising, and we. So, things are looking very promising, and we really excited about what's going on there. Any other committee reports? No? Okay, that brings us to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. No staff announcements tonight. So, it's always fun to see Councilor V. Hill's face when we announce that, but yeah, moving things along.
Okay, no more staff announcements. What about council comments? Any council comments? Councilor V. Hill, Jan V. Hill, and Councilor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't had a council comment in, in a few months. But want to recognize the police force for, they had a busy weekend, Saturday morning early with a, a shooting and that, and they, and they got the guys and that. So, thank you. And then want to acknowledge the people who protested on Saturday, over three hundred and fifty people, and there were no issues. And thank you to the, the cops for being there and keeping the peace in case anything happened. Then I wish the library people were still here, but my daughters are involved in that summer reading program, and it's like, we're going to the library like every other day to keep reading books and then the beads and this. It's like, it's good though. It's a good problem to have. Go to the library. What a concept, right? So, thank you to Andy and the library and all those guys. Thanks.
Okay, Councilor Krebs and Councilor Dominguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the thank you that Councilor V. Hill was doing. Police had a very busy, all over the spectrum job on Saturday, and it, you know, and so, thank you for all your hard work on that. And I want to thank the citizens of Alamosa that did come out to protest, that it was civil, they behaved, they said what they needed to say. If there were other protesters for the protesters there, they said what they needed to say, but everybody showed each other dignity and space, and I appreciate that. And then just a reminder that tomorrow is Juneteenth, and there is an event in Carroll Park, recognizing that with some resources and some business owners. And so, it starts at four. I believe it's from four to seven or four to eight. And so, I just urge everyone, if they have a chance, just to stop by and, and see, see what's available. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Krebs. Councilor Dominguez?
Same thing. I want to thank the Police Department for being responsive and juggling two major things that just unfolded all at the same time. And thanks to the community for keeping their composure and doing what they're allowed to do, and, and everything was safe during that. And hopefully, this weekend treats you guys a little better. I know we have a carnival next door and some other things. So, hopefully, you get a break this weekend and everything goes smooth. So, be safe out there.
Okay, any other comments? All right, well, want to thank the entire staff and everybody for all the hard work that you all do. We know we have so many different projects and different activities and events going on around the city and all of the departments, and we greatly appreciate all your efforts. So, keep up the great work. And thank you, Mark Lloyd, for sitting in today for our city attorney. And, and Harry, thank you for sitting in for the city manager. That, this just shows that we have a great team. Everybody works together and collaborate well. So, thank you all. With that being said, I don't see any lights. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.